Welcome to the September 21st, 2015 regularly scheduled Midland Public School Board meeting. If you would all please turn off your phones so they don't interfere with our TV feed, I would appreciate it. And at this time, if you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. If you would take roll for us, please.
I will. President Wasserman is absent. Vice President Fransdatt.
Here.
Secretary Baker here. Treasurer Singer.
Here.
Member Frizzi.
Here.
Member Gordon.
Here.
And Member McFarland.
Here.
All right, we have six out of seven. All right, next we have the consent agenda. Item 2.1 is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting in August. 2.2 is the following people were recommended for employment for this school year. 2.3 are staff members who have announced their resignations with the effective dates listed. 2.4 bids have been accepted and tabulated for asbestos abatement work for the renovation and demolition activities at Central Cook, Parkdale, and Mills. And 2.5 is approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the months of July and August. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.5.
All right. Moved by Yvonne, supported by Pam. Is there any discussion? Seeing no, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to the next item, we have presentations to the board, and I'll turn it over to Bob.
As you know, annual basis, as we had one fiscal year, we have our annual audit. David Youngstrom is here from Yo-Yo. He do a presentation of your draft audit of the fourth fiscal year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Captain Yo-Yo. I'm pleased to be here to present your June 30th, 2015 audit report. It's not without a lot of effort that goes into getting this. This is my, I've only been this long, my second school district I've been at this year. We did some major changes this year, a new CASB standard, which is the Government Accounting Standard Board Number 68, which is one of the reasons you have a draft in your file that we looked at today. We're still waiting on the state of Michigan to finalize their audited numbers, and once we have that, we'll have the final audit reports. But it will not impact your general fund, which is what we're going to talk about tonight, so that's why we can move forward with the presentation. Certainly, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to do that with you. Let me try to get this going the right way. All right, what you're hiring us for, opinion on the financial statements. It is an unmodified opinion, means there are no modifications necessary to be in compliance with accounting standards. So it's a clean audit, that's what you're looking for from us. It's the highest level of assurance we can give on a financial statement. So let's take a look at our general fund. Our balance sheet is June 30th, which is a snapshot in times. We have comparative from one year to the next. You can see our cash, cash is one of our large assets, about $6 million. And I'll show you where we're going to spend that cash in a few minutes. You also have $9.6 million due from other governmental units, which is mostly the state of Michigan, but also a little bit of federal dollars in there as well, and some local taxes. And then we have other assets, which include inventories and prepaids totaling about $15.8 million. We did have about $16 million last year, so we did spend down our assets a little bit. Our largest liability are really our accrued salaries and flinches, mostly our 10-month employees in there. That number went up about $400,000 this year, 6.9 from 6.5. And included in our other liabilities, about 571 pretty comparable, including deferred revenues, some accounts payable, and things like that. You do have some property taxes that weren't collected within 60 days, which are deferred. And what you have left is your fund balance, sitting at about 8.3 compared to 8.5 or 8.8 a year ago, which is about a $500,000 decline. And we'll spend a little time talking about that in a few minutes. So taking a look at our standard revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance. Revenues about $79.3 million this year, $78.6 a year ago, up about 1%. Our expenditures down about 1% as well, $79.8, creating a loss of about $493,000 or half a million dollars. And then we lost, you can see where we hired, the year before, we spent about $2.3 million. So both those numbers went in the right direction, we're still sitting at a half a million dollar decrease in fund balance. So let's take a look at our budget. We really look close to the budget when we go through the audit and compliance requirements. Revenue's really close within there, about 0.4% difference there. Really, the major difference there is grant revenues. We budget to use a lot of the grant revenues and don't necessarily have them, so we carry them over to the next fiscal year. And with those, the corresponding expenditures that go with those aren't spent until the next year. Overall, we had about a 1.1% change from our final to our actual, which is really, you look at the grand scheme of things, about 1%. So when you look at that, it's really a good budget. You have a really good budget process you follow. We test that process throughout, make sure it's posted transparently on the website, and we followed all the things we're supposed to in that area. But I give you a lot of credit for being that close in this day and age. Year-over-year comparison, again, look at revenues, 1.9%, expenditures down 1.3%, both again in the right direction. Our revenues up and our expenses below, our budget down. So if anything happens, good things happen to us in the bottom line. So where do we get our money from? The largest piece to buy, the blue piece to buy there is about 64% from the state of Michigan, that is up a percent, a little bit more dependent this year. Our local tax, local dollars, which is mostly property taxes, up about 1% as well, 28%. We did see a decline in the inter-district side, as well as in our federal side. So a little bit less federal dollars coming our way, a little bit more state money and Next one. Just kind of looking at a bar chart, pretty green there, isn't it? You can really see the revenues are very flat this is the last three years. You can see the red is very some of the green and the blue, all looking very tight, a little uptick in the last year for the state. Again, a little more of those dollars, over $50.9 million compared to $49.1. The rest are all pretty comparable for one year to the next if we look at that. So where do we spend our money? You have the bigger piece to buy. We spend 86% salary and employee benefits, which is our people. Spent almost all of our money on our people, which is about the same percentage as it was a year ago. So 86% again. Our purchase services, about 5%. Supplies and materials was actually down 1%. And our other costs, our other costs up about 1%. And capital, they remain the same at about 1%. So pretty comparable from one year to the next. But again, when you look at the thing, you pretty much say, everything is paid in our place, and we're spending our dollars. This is one of my favorite slides I do anywhere I go. It's just a comparative general fund expenditures, and it goes back to Prozole, first year of Prozole. And you can see, again, the last three years, the other yellow is the other expenditures. Support services is in the green, and what we're really spending on instruction is the blue. And you can see pretty steadily, flat across is our blue expenditures. The other was down about $100,000 this year. Our support service is down about 1.2, and our instruction was up about $200,000. When you look at where you're spending your dollars. When you look at that compared to 95, our other costs are down about $400,000, support up about $300,000. And in the classroom, we're spending about $15.8 million more than we were in Prozole when that first came through. I just think that tells us a great story about educational funding in the state of Michigan, how it's going. So when you look at this, I'd like to do a brief people analysis of our revenue expenditures, just to kind of say, okay, where are we? The green being the revenues, the red being the expenditures. We've had four straight years where we have spent more than we've taken in. And I know it's no surprise to anybody here, but that's concerning. And when you go to the next slide, next couple of slides here, talks about our rainy day fund, our unspendable fund balance, really what's left. Our total fund balance, the total of expenditures, about 10%. Unrestricted part of that, about 9%. We could basically operate the district for 38 days on our reserves, even was 40 days a year ago. Again, we spent down that half a million dollars, reducing the number of days of reserves we have. Look at it for a calendar school year, 19 days to 18. So again, that's not a lot of reserves. And the state of Michigan is looking at the 15% as gold green, and under 5 is red. So again, we always just need to be conscious of that as we kind of move forward, hard for the money in the fund balance. This is where you've been. We've decreased our fund balance 42% since 2011. We spent it, you know, we saw where we spent that, those dollars, and again, we're down to, you can see it's not quite as steep, we took a lot of edge off that this year. Still have a little bit where we're going to go, but I think that kind of tells the story of where our reserves were and where they are, and to find that healthy medium is a challenge. That's kind of the financial piece of the presentation. What if we're going to go into some other things? Any questions on that so far? No. Let's talk about our internal controls. You have a very good system here. We're in contact with management throughout the year. Something's coming up, we took the bonds went through this year. We worked with them all year to make sure everything was being counted for correctly, to make sure we, there are no surprises when we get to the audit. And that just shows you that they care about the system, care about the dollars. And, you know, some of the things we looked at this year, we tested sinking fund dollars, testing, credit cards, reimbursements, disbursements, receipts, and payroll. We really focused a lot on IT this year, spent a lot of time in that area, looking at those. And we're pleased to report you have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls. And really, everything we looked at was very well documented and very clean, so credit to the staff in that area. We're also, we do what's called a single audit, which is federal compliance audit. This year, last year, we tested Title I. This year, we tested nutrition, nutrition clusters are a major program. We test 14 key attributes within that area. It takes a better part of a couple of days to test that program, and it's pretty rigorous, and we have no findings in that area, which we're pleased to report as well. So everything, several years without any findings. So that's, you don't always see that a lot of districts, there's a lot of compliance that you have to do through those grants, and they're ever-changing. That is kind of the end of my presentation. I guess I'd like to thank Sheriff Cooper and Mrs. Lobster for providing the board back there for all of their help to make this happen. To get here this early with all the changes we've had this year, it's all credit to them and the hard work they do and their staff does. So couldn't do it without them. And again, to be here this early, there aren't many districts that haven't had their audits presented yet. So that's what we're proud of. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I'm pleased that there were no findings, and I've got a lot of respect and faith in Bob and Carol and the administration for what they've done. And especially looking through all the numbers, very appreciative for the whole team at Midland Public and how we were able to reduce expenses and how it's so important. And it was, it's great to have such a team that understands the situation we're in. I feel like we're heading in the right direction though.
Any other comments?
No.
Thank you, I really appreciate. We sit down with Dave earlier and get to ask him all kinds of questions without any of the staff in the room, and just really pleased to hear how well our staff works together and how conscientious everybody is and how professional, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, okay. So we need to vote to, is it to approve the audit, accept the audit?
Accept the audit.
Okay, so I will take a motion to accept the audit.
I will motion to accept the audit.
All right, Pam? All right, so Pam motion, Patrick second. Does anyone have any other discussion on this?
It was very in-depth and felt like no stone was unturned, so.
Yes.
Very good.
And next year, we expect Dave will be standing in front of us telling you he has a balanced budget, so hopefully that's accurate.
It was very encouraging seeing his trend lined on our unspendable fund balance. So, all right, can we do, do we have to do roll call on this, or?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passed. Back to you, Bob.
Okay, and I just want to add too, before we leave, that, that it has been nice also working with Yo-Yo and Dave, especially with the bonds, which were new to all of us, and having them work with us at that point in time. It's very helpful to have someone you can call and check on, and I've got to thank the business office, Carol Outts. They did tremendous amount of work to be ready for that audit when it comes. If you haven't seen it up close, you wouldn't know, it's a lot of work, just done in a very timely fashion. We're closing out, trying to get things ready, and it's all coming together at the same time. So they put in some long hours in the summer getting ready for that. Certainly, I don't want to take credit for any of that part, but they did a really nice job, so really appreciate the work they did. I get to bring to you the tax resolution for the winner of 2015. We visit this annually where the state requires us to fill out a form at L-4029, it's called. But in essence, it tells all the taxing agents out there what millage rates we want them to assess that and levy at. Of course, this year, the addition is the bonds that are on there, and you would remember, as you see a copy in your packet, it's also the city collects in two times, summer and winter, where the county just does winter. Our form, if you will, is a little more complicated than lots of districts because we have our hold harmless millage, we have our non-homestead, we now have the bonds, and of course, you also have commercial personal property that kind of fits in a different category. So the write-up that you have there, just refresh your memory, that the hold harmless was voted on with that win. Anybody reads it all the time, they see right away, you're going to do what for mills? It looks like 5.65, so on and so forth. Just remember, that's the original voted amount. And since that time on the hold harmless, we have to go through a calculation every year that determines how much money we can raise, and that determines the millage rate. So we can raise $415.31 per student. So we have to estimate about how many students we have, and we have to estimate taxable value across the county. We do that because, I brought a proposal to you in the summer, we have to tell the city in the summer what to take, but we always wait to fill out the official form until September because over the course of the summer, the taxable value can change, and also the number of students. So we're very careful about not jumping to conclusion on students, so we usually go with the estimate that we have. The other thing that you'll notice, and in fact, in doing so, the taxable value changed that earlier estimate I had back in June, I think it's $110,000 different, doesn't sound like much, but it adds up. So what they allow you to do in the state when we figure that out, is every year, they let us come back the following year and determine if we assess and get too much money coming in, or we did not get enough. So one of the things, for example, that it gets adjusted by this year is, we took in less money than we should have last year, because if you remember, we were predicting a few less students a year ago, and we had more stay, so we were entitled to raise more money, and we did. So from year to year, it always varies, just a little bit going up and down based on taxable value and where our student population is, and how things went the year before. So there's been years we've had to lower our millage rate because we liked it too much, and some where we can raise that. So what this proposal does, in the L-4029 you have in front of you in the tax resolution just runs through that we're doing 18 mills on non-homestead, that the hold harmless or homestead tax is 1.7766, and the commercial personal property is 7.7766. Of course, the bond on this first go-through, don't forget, that's determined each year by our financial advisors on the bond, was 2.95 earlier. If you remember, we split it for the city, so you see half that amount. And so at that point, we're just making this official, this goes out first thing tomorrow. All the county agencies that need to, all the taxable and a copy of this and a form all go to the state. It does require that you do a roll call vote on this. I like the date's passed, you don't have to read the whole resolution, so you can do that part. You just have to make the motion and roll call vote to approve that, and then we have to, you're authorizing both the president, in this case, vice president, and secretary to sign the tax certificate resolution and be sent out.
The motion should state that copies on file here, if they'd like to, if someone in the public would like to see it.
Okay.
I motion to approve item 3.2, the winner tax resolution, where there is a copy on file here at the administration building, if anyone would like to see it.
Get support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Pam, supported by Lynn. Is there any discussion?
Nice job explaining it. That can be tricky.
All right, at this time, Lynn, if you could do a roll call vote for us, please?
President Wasserman is absent. Vice President Fransdatt?
Yes.
Secretary Baker, yes. Treasurer Singer?
Yes.
Member Frizzi?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
And Member McFarland?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Do you want to take this one?
Sure.
All right.
We have a presentation for you tonight, and Mr. Jesser will be introducing, I think, who he's brought with him tonight, which is the Midland High Kiva Club.
Evening. I think we're all here. Mr. Sheriff, board members, thanks for having us tonight. The presentation we're going to share with you is from a group of Midland High School students involved in Kiva Club, and it's one that has been operating at the school for many years. And it's not unique to Midland High School. There are Kiva groups and organizations in other schools and around the country, frankly. But what is unique in this case is that I don't think many in the community are familiar with what Kiva does. And personally, I didn't learn about this group until I started to transition to Midland High School last spring. Excuse me, last spring. So I think what you're going to hear is that Kiva students have a unique opportunity to see some of the real-world applications of principles of business and economics that they might otherwise just learn in the classroom or from their teacher. And so at this point, I'll invite Mr. John Mulvaney, who is the club advisor of Kiva at Midland High School, to introduce the kids who are going to present.
Hi, thanks for inviting us again. My name's John Mulvaney. I teach economics and history at Midland High. I'm going to try really hard not to talk a lot, which is hard for a teacher, but the kids know everything. I started this club as an activity in my class over 10 years ago. In the last several years, these students and a few others really have turned it into a student-driven club. So without further ado, here's the executive board. I'm going to have them introduce themselves and take it from here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Haynes. I'm the co-president of Kiva Club at Midland High School. As Mr. Mulvaney said, this initially started out as an activity in his class, and we've been a club for about, since 2009, and we've been quite active. All of us here are very prideful of Kiva and what we do for the community, not only globally, but also here at Midland, in Midland, and at Midland High. Right here, you can see a picture of last year's club. About two years ago, we were only about 10 people, and we've luckily grown to about 50 as of this year, and we hope to keep growing as the years go on. Everyone's very excited to be a part of Kiva and give back to the community, as I stated. This is a great opportunity for Midland High students, as well as just people interested in economics and business, to really get involved and give back to in the ways that we are all encouraged to with the one-on-one and in community.
Hello, my name is Jared Holman. I'm also a co-president of the Kiva Club. And you might be wondering, what is Kiva? We are a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to assist individuals on a worldwide scale through lending and microfinancing. And we're able to do this through the internet, which is incredible. You wouldn't be able to say that 20 years ago, but through the internet, we're able to find these people, and we are able to lend them money, which then creates opportunity, like I said, worldwide. Besides that, besides that, we also do quite a bit of community service here in Midland, as Jonathan was just mentioning. Last year, we frequently picked trash up on a road that is commonly used for students to walk to and from lunch, as well as we loaned out, well, I don't know if it's loaned out, but we gave bonds and grants to other clubs and organizations at Midland High that were looking for funds and capital to assist them in their, in their projects and their accomplishments. So that was another thing that we did at Midland High School.
So one of the big things we like to talk about with Kiva Club is the quote, "Give a man a fish to feed him for a day, teach a man to fish to feed him for a lifetime." This is kind of our mantra at Kiva Club, because it's what we do, it's not like charity, what we, we give out money to entrepreneurs around the world, whether it be to buy cattle or clothing or fabric for their businesses, for them to sustain themselves and just be able to grow as individuals financially. And so in that sense, we know in our hearts and through our account that these individuals are making the money back and sustaining themselves for a lifetime. Unlike charity, they don't need another loan, they don't have to come back to the system in order to get some more money for their products or for their materials. And so we really pride ourselves in being able to loan this out, be able to make sure that the individuals are making enough money for them to make a living, and then we are able to loan it out again to another individual. So it's really self-fulfilling, as well as just a great opportunity for all the students
Hello, my name is Connor Legg, and I am a co-treasurer for the Kiva Club. And up here, you can see just some data on the statistics of the club. And at the very top, you can see that it says that we've raised, or we've lent out $16,400, but really, this isn't fully up to date, and I believe that number is about $18,000 now. And so that makes our total loans up to well over 650. And also in the top right corner of this graphic, you can see that in 2013, we lent out about $2,000, and then in 2014, because of the growth of our club, we were well over about $4,000 to $5,000. And in 2015, we're only halfway through the year, but we're right around that $2,000 mark once again. And you can also see from this graphic, all the different countries in which Kiva loans out, that we lent out our loans to people that wanted it. And right here, this is a picture of the wonderful club once again, and it's kind of hard to see, but on the map right there, we stuck up different sticky notes in spots or locations that we decided to loan our money to.
Hi, I'm Hope Kessler. I'm the secretary of Kiva Club, and I'm going to talk a little bit about how we raise the money to be able to loan that much. One, the first thing is the compatibility test, which we do around Valentine's Day, and it's where kids take a test on basic information about themselves, and a company pairs them up with the people within the school they're the most compatible with, and then they can buy the tests during, or the results during lunch. We do restaurant nights, which is where we go to a local restaurant, and basically, a percentage of the profits from that night go towards Kiva Club. And then the book covers. So here's a picture of the book covers. So this is something we started this year, we're selling them for $2 in Chemick Corner at school, and it was kind of beneficial for two reasons. It's a great fundraiser, and then also, the kids in Kiva went around and sold the advertisements. And so it was great to learn how to pitch an idea to a business and to convince them to invest in you and that you're worth investing in.
Hello, I'm, I'm a senior, and I'm a co-treasurer, I'm Connor on the Kiva Club. Just going to talk a little bit about the logistics of the meetings real quick. We usually try to meet every Tuesday after school, and these meetings usually last about 10 to 20 minutes. They're led by us executives in Mr. Mulvaney's room, and we'll start off usually taking attendance and talking about possible community service opportunities, and try to discuss and brainstorm good fundraisers to raise money for the club. And about once every semester, we have lending sessions, and this is kind of like the climax of the club. This is when we travel down to the library at our school, and we log on to the computers and go to kiva.org, and this is where we can search through different entrepreneurs who are requesting donations and loans. And so the whole club goes, and they gets to, they get to look for what people they think deserve our money to loan to, and who they think can put it to good use and help the world. So I hope you learned a little bit about Kiva Club at Midland High and what we do in the community, the globe, and at Midland High, and thank you for your time.
All right, as all of the great, I'm sorry, as all of the great students we have at Midland Public Schools, way too humble in what they do. Just to focus on it, these students and others have raised over $15,000 that they've loaned and re-loaned over several years in $25 increments, touching entrepreneurs throughout the world. Kiva is a California-based, internet-based company from which we are a small part, but one of the, one of the biggest clubs on that site right now is the Midland High Chemists. You can see that symbol from the hundreds of people we've loaned to in $25 increments, they pay us back, we re-loan that money. And even though it's not a financial interest, they don't pay a financial interest on those loans, the interest, the warm fuzzy feeling that the Kiva members get from making those loans is what they get paid with. So again, it really has become a student-focused club, and they have done a great job. So I'll call all of you back here again, and see if the board have any questions.
Can you give us some examples of some of the businesses you've loaned to? And where they, some of them are, and what types of businesses they've been?
A lot of the business that we loaned to are for cattle and different animals, so they can raise them and provide milk and sell them to the people in the village. they can raise them and provide milk and sell them to the people in the village, as well as we do a lot of fabric and people who can create their own clothing and sell it back to people in their village, once again. A lot of where we loaned to is actually in the Philippines, which is understandable with a lot of the environmental challenges, yes, that they have had in the last few years. So a lot of people trying to get back up on their feet. So Kiva, the California-based company, is out there collecting people who need this little stepping stool to reach us. So it's like the little mediator between the people and us, so we're able to really connect with them and handpick each individual that we would like to loan to.
We've got a couple of questions. Are the amount that you loan, is it limited to $25 per loan? Or do you guys loan more than that?
I guess each, like, request that someone may have for their loan, it can be pretty much any range of money, but you give in $25 increments. So let's say someone wants $500 to go towards their farm or towards their business that they want to start up. You can loan them more than $25, but you just go with $25 increments.
Okay. And so you guys are kind of like a scaled-down version of a group called the Blue Water Angels. You don't retain any interest at all in any of your investments?
No, we don't, not financially. In the $25 increment number, we could, if there was a $500 request for something going on in Africa or Asia, we could, the students could decide to fund that full $500, but that increases the risk big time, because there, we have a 1.4% default rate right now, which is pretty low, but it does happen. And it's interesting, because they have all those numbers of their delinquency rate and so forth that we can look at. These guys don't look at it that much, but it's there as a teaching tool. But we could give up to $500 if there was a $500 request. We keep the $25 mostly because it gives a wider variety for the kids to loan out to, and it really spreads out that risk. Regarding the interest that we have in these various investments, it is through Kiva, as John said, kind of intermediary, and we really have no collateral, I guess, other than that $25 trust that we have. But over the years, really, it's been close to 1%, and that's on the plus. In addition to that, we usually give some donation to Kiva itself. It's a nonprofit to help that organization itself stay in business.
Okay. One final question, and then I'll, I guess, turn the floor over. How do you guys compare with your revenue versus your lending? Are you giving out more than you're taking in, or is there a medium somewhere that you guys try and stay within?
I would say typically, pretty much all that we do make, we do loan out. We save some for later lending sessions, as well as, like we mentioned earlier, we did give grants to other various clubs at Midland High. So we did have some surplus, but generally speaking, all the revenue that we make, we do, we do lend out.
That's great. I think what you guys do is fantastic, and I appreciate it. Thank you for answering my questions.
How long do you stay in contact with the people you loan money to? I mean, do you have any follow-up to see how they do?
So basically, we don't have any direct contact and direct communication, but what we do see is their story. They're able to tell the people, the Kiva people that are in their country or their village, a little bit about themselves. And so we're able to read about themselves, what they plan to do with the money, how long they plan to have the money for, when they plan to have it repaid. And so I guess the only real communication we have is to see the progress in which they are repaying their full debt. And so at the end, we can see, oh, about a year from now, you, a year ago, we've seen that you have made up that $500, and you are going beyond that to self-sustain. And so that's really the only real communication we have directly. Other than that, we just keep track of the people that we loan to and just make sure that they're all making well for themselves.
Do you have a favorite story of a loan that you handed out?
Like I said, we donate a lot of money, and so there's many people that we do donate to. I don't know if it's a particular story of who we donated to, but one particular story that I think we all like to share is, a couple of years ago, Kiva Club was just a few people. Like, most of us were just wrangled in by one guy. He convinced us all to join. And then just to look at it today and what it's grown into with all the members that we have today is just, that's one of the stories we like to tell.
That's a great story. My last question is if there was an individual or an entity who wanted to donate to your organization outside of the book covers or various fundraisers, how would they do that? How can the public reach out to you and offer help?
Through the online system that Kiva provides for us, through the Midland High Chemics group page, you can search Midland High Chemics, the team, and you can donate right through the online system. Or you yourself could go through Kiva and create an account, and basically purchase a, whatever amount you wish to provide to entrepreneurs in the world, and you yourself can become a part, an individual of Kiva. You can also join our team as well. There's a lot of different variations of what you can do. Or you could give directly to Midland High Kiva Club themselves.
And then we access through the Midland High website to the Midland High Kiva Club?
Yes, through the Kiva Club.org, and then looking up Midland High Chemics on the page.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mulvaney, for bringing this to the schools. I heard about what you did years ago, and it's a great story and a wonderful way to bring economics to the students and to have a program that the students are so excited about and to see the growth and to give back, as well as learn. Hats off to you.
Well, thanks. And the students are doing all the work, and they've raised so much money. It's interesting, just the spot, I don't, some people, I don't know if you remember Bailey Rabonic, she's at CMU, a Midland High student, and she's recently started a Kiva Club at CMU. So it truly is moving outward, even the Midland High Kiva Club from here locally. So thank you.
And that was actually going to be my question, knowing some of you up there, if you were thinking about continuing this on when you go on to college next year, if this is the type of organization that you would look to maybe be an entrepreneur and start wherever you end up.
I see a lot of heads bobbing up here.
Yeah.
I would ask all or any of you, what is your opinion, I mean, what is the biggest change for you personally, being a part of Kiva? What difference has it made in your life?
So I guess, living in Midland, we've been, it's kind of sheltered, I guess, in a way, so you don't know a lot about other places in the world. And I personally haven't traveled a lot to go see, you know, the poverty around the world. So going through the website and looking through all the people who are asking for a loan is pretty moving to see, you know, just the simplest things, there's a water filter. When I don't even think about it, I just open my fridge and get water. So it's pretty incredible to see and then, you know, know that you're helping and that making a difference with these people, so to make their lives better.
Do you loan in the U.S. or is it mainly overseas?
Yeah, right in Midland High.
Oh, well, that is true. Good point. Well, no, those aren't grants. Those aren't loans, though, right?
Yeah, last year, we loaned to the DECA and DECA and Yerba, we gave little mini grants to them.
Well, no, I didn't know on this Kiva website, are there a lot of U.S.?
Also, we have loaned to U.S. They usually have a higher request rate. It's more expensive in the U.S., and they also have a higher default rate, so.
Okay, that's interesting.
We have some, as you mentioned. They are available.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next up, we have the September Shining Stars.
And our first recipient will be Jason Mary. If Jason would come up, and I'll read all kinds of good stuff about you, Jason, while you're walking up. Mr. Jason Mary earned his bachelor's of science degree from Western Michigan University in 1993 with a major in special education and a minor in health. In 1998, he earned his master of arts degree in teaching, learning behavior disorders from Saginaw Valley State University, and has earned many credits beyond his master's degree. Jason began his Midland Public Schools career as a special education teacher at Central Intermediate School and HH Dow High School in 1995. Jason taught special education and coached football, track, wrestling at Central until 2004, when he moved to Northeast, where he continues his teaching career today. During his Northeast journey, he moved from teaching special education to teaching sixth grade regular education, social studies, language arts, and math. Supervisors of Mr. Mary have commented, Jason is committed to student success, to staying involved in the building, and he works hard to continue his professional growth. He has high expectations for every student and stresses the importance of cooperation, responsibility, and hard work. Another supervisor stated, Mr. Mary's focus is always on what is best for kids. Mr. Mary is reliable, fun, and true asset to the sixth grade team at Northeast overall. Jason was nominated for the Shining Star Award by an MPS parent. Here are some of her comments. My son was very nervous to enter middle school. Mr. Mary met with him privately at school for an hour, gave him a personal tour, and helped him with his locker and everything. It was a very hot summer day, and Mr. Mary took very careful care of my son to make sure he felt very good about Northeast. He wasn't rushed, was very patient and understanding. That was above and beyond, in my opinion. Congratulations, Jason.
Congratulations. Thank you. You certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
In our second shining star, you may have seen running around in here, because Billy Dumont Oliver also assisted with our board meeting tonight, and she is probably running right now to make it down from the broadcasting portion of the board meeting tonight. Ms. Billy Dumont Oliver began her MPS career as a para-professional at Chipewassee Elementary, where she worked with special needs children in the lunchroom and as a Title I para. In 2007, Billy moved into her IMTC MPS TV, well, that's a mouthful, para-professional position. In 2009, Billy's position was evaluated and reclassified into a manager level with the title MPS TV specialist, a role which she continues today. However, Billy's role keeps changing and evolving. A couple of years ago, the district added YouTube as another video communication vehicle. Billy willingly embraced that medium. Just last year, with the resignation of the district's central auditorium manager, Billy gracefully agreed to take on the added building manager duties of that building and auditorium. Supervisors of Ms. Oliver's have stated, I applaud Ms. Oliver's attitude and work ethic. She works evenings to film school board meetings and other special events. She does not watch the clock and goes above and beyond on a regular basis. I am pleased to have her as part of our team. Ms. Oliver is a diligent self-starter who regularly meets and exceeds goals and expectations in all areas. Billy was nominated for the Shining Star Award by an MPS colleague. Some of her comments include, with the resignation of the auditorium manager during the 2014-15 school year, Billy Oliver was asked to take over not only the oversight for the auditorium, but the central building as well. This was in addition to her MPS TV, district videographer, and other responsibilities. Billy was willing to take on these new duties and jumped in with both feet. She oversees the central cleaning staff, as well as any setups that are requested for that building. She did a great job with the setup of the opening staff meeting this year that had more than 500 in attendance. Billy is a very conscient, detail-oriented employee who does a wonderful job of videotaping and overseeing the playback of board meetings, district events such as graduation ceremonies, and much more. Billy is a dedicated member of the MPS team. Congratulations, Billy.
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Rock star. We have one other portion tonight. Cindy, put the screen down. Speaking of opening day ceremonies, when our staff returned, we did have our opening day breakfast, and we recognized our distinguished service winners. I lost my spot here. I'm thinking out of place. And our winners were, a little bit about distinguished service and who serves and picks those off of that committee. So it is funded by the Gerstacker Foundation, and we have a committee who selects those after nominations are put in throughout the district. And this year, we recognized Dave Deesik, who was filled in admirably as we were kind of in a bind as interim director of technology, which I expect, this is Dave's in the crowd, that interim part to move soon, so be off of his title. And Deborah Morgan Stern, a para-professional at Dow High. And we surprised our own Cindy Young, who, if you saw, does most of the work for this thing. So we had a difficult time of hiding this from Cindy, but I think we pulled it off as you could see on her face that day. So we'd like to recognize our three distinguished service winners this year. And as you know, these type of employees are really what makes our district come.
Well, thank you all. All right. That was fun to see you all on stage.
Did you wonder, geez, who's number three?
Number three. We're hidden. It was all hidden. It was behind the scenes, so it was very stealth.
Penny Miller Nielsen did most of the work on the hiding part, so.
I thought it was fun to have it at the opening day, so so many people could share, you know, and the excitement and appreciate all that they do.
Yeah, second year, we've done that, you know, and as large of a district as we are, sometimes just seeing that face with that name helps a whole lot as well for everybody.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Request to address the board. Do we have any requests to address the board tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Next up is FFO, and the first thing we have is a study committee minutes from PM.
I will read the minutes. September 14, 2015, Mr. Cooper presented information about the tax certification resolution for the levy of 2015 property taxes on property within Midland Public School District. This tax certification resolution will be included in the September 21 for Event Education Agenda. Let's talk about that. For the audit, Mr. Youngstrom reviewed the draft of the annual financial statements and auditor's report of June 30, 2015. The opinion is unmodified with no findings, meaning that the auditors had to make no modifications to the financial statements. A full report will be made at the September 21 Board of Education meeting. Following the general presentation, staff excuse themselves, provide the board members present and auditor the opportunity to meet privately. Bond update, Daryl Umbrau from Barton Mallow reviewed the concept of general conditions in the bond projects and some of the chosen vendors. Dale Jerome from French Associates gave an update on the new elementary school design process and discussed possible exterior design concepts and elements. The next FFO meeting will be October 12 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you.
We have some gifts to review today. I've got a couple of different items that just are for information, and then one that requires the board's action. The first is 6.2 there, you'll see. These are items that were donated. St. John's Lutheran Youth Group donated backpacks, what was school supplies, to four of our elementary schools. And AVI SPL Company employees, which is an audiovisual service provider for Dow Chemical, they donated, delivered 65 pounds of school supplies to Plymouth. Under 6.3, we have, for your information, gifts totaling $5,572.50. You'll notice that the first four are gifts for HH Dow High School in the form of $200 for hockey, another $822.50 for hockey, $1,000 for football, and there's one for $1,550. Make special mention there because it is in honor of Mr. Jack Mills, who had left some money and then wanted to give it to a science, and that's what the Koanis Foundation chose as their destination. You'll also see a $2,000 there for varsity cheer and junior cheer clinics from the Dow Chemical Community Gift Club. For action, 6.4, we have two gifts totaling $15,000 total. The first one was a $10,000 gift for our district elementary STEM programs. That was from Verizon. And the second one was $5,000 given to HH Dow High School Athletics from the Fabiano Foundation. And those two would require your.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the gifts under item 6.4, $10,000 from Verizon for the STEM programs and $5,000 for Dow High School Athletics from the Fabiano Foundation.
That was item 6.3, but yes. No, it's 6.4.
6.4, I think.
It is here. Oh, I have an older copy. I'll support that. All right. Moved by Scott, supported by Yvonne. Do we have any comments, questions?
A big thank you to Verizon. Big thank you to the Fabiano family and the Fabiano Foundation for their ongoing support of high school athletics.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you to all the donations. I even see the school supplies. Anyone who has children in school knows how much we spend at the beginning.
We have two memorials we would like to make this evening. The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Beverly, I'm going to say it wrong again, Cindy, help me, Ashelman, who passed away on August 21. Mrs. Ashelman was the secretary at Jefferson Intermediate School for 18 years until her retirement in 1992. Martha Carter, who passed away on September 12. Mrs. Carter taught kindergarten at Seabird Elementary School for 15 years, retired in 1987. We extend our sympathy to her family, and we'd all have one more that we'd extend sympathy to is Grace M. Wiggins, passed away on August 16. Mrs. Wiggins was a librarian at Mapleton in Jefferson and was awarded the Gerstacker Award in 1976. She retired in 1979 after 11 years of service.
Thank you. Thoughts with those families? Would you like to do seven, too?
Yes, we can do that as well. We have two retirements from the school district, and that is Ms. Luann Sherwood, a bus driver in the Transportation Department, and her retirement is effective November 1. And as Yvonne was talking to me earlier, Ms. Viola Collin, former teacher and MCA president, will retire on October 31.
Thank them for their years of service. Wish them well in their retirement. All right, correspondence to and from the Board of Education, you can read that in the agenda. And scheduled activities, all the rest of our board meetings for the rest of the year are posted. And at this time, we'll move into our study discussion session, and I will start on my left with you, Yvonne.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Youngstrom for his presentation. He did a great job explaining everything in a way I could understand it, so no small feat. And it was great to have the students from the Kiva Club here. What a great experience for them. I mean, they can see what they're doing. It must be really interesting, I think, to them to see that people can do so much with as little as $25. You know, we don't really think in those terms. So thank you to them, and congratulations to Ms. Sherwood and to Vi on their retirements, and thank you for your years of service. Thank you, Cindy, for everything you do for us, and congratulations to the Shining Stars and to the other, what do I want to say here?
Distinguished service.
Yes, distinguished service recipients. Thank you so much. I think that's it.
I agree, and I add Dave to that list. Today, I was able, I had the opportunity to meet teachers from China. We had several here at the administration building, and it was a wonderful opportunity to talk with and share perspectives and what we do here and hear stories about what, how teaching happens, teaching and learning in China. So that was exciting, and I'm glad we have that, those opportunities. I think that was funded through the Gerstackers as well, so what great opportunities we have because of these foundations in our community. I guess the other thing is, I'll be keeping a pulse on the legislation, what happens as it comes to third grade reading, and see what's going to become of all the conversations and what changes might be in store for us.
I had the opportunity to be here this afternoon, too, as Pam was talking about. It's just a very fascinating, fun opportunity to meet with teachers from China, and I hear their questions that they were asking of their interpreter. And Mike did, and Brian did a great job presenting how education goes on here and answering their questions. So just a very, very fun opportunity, and I understand they're here for a couple of weeks, aren't they? So they'll be visiting a lot of schools and different places, even in Michigan. Same with Kiva Club, and we talk about international studies, whether it's teachers and what young students have available to them now to impact not only locally but internationally. I just think it's just so exciting to see where they're going with the Kiva Club and the lives that they impact, and hopefully they'll carry that through to their whole lives. And we talk about gifts, once again, just looking at what our donors give to us, whether it's a $25 loan that the Kiva students are giving to impact lives or the very, very generous amounts that we contribute to our program. So thank you. And Billy and Jason, once again, thank you. They do great, great things for our kids and all of us, too. It's like the beginning of the school year is off to a great start. I know I hear the band and the football game, I mean, everything is at full swing. Weather's great, so it makes it even more fun to go to those activities. So I think that's it for now.
All right, appreciate Mr. Youngstrom's time here tonight regarding the financial audit. A lot of positive things in there. I think for me, seeing the fund balance stabilize, it's a wonderful thing. We see how far that's come down over the past five, six, seven years. Look forward to seeing that come down even more in the next, hopefully, 12 months. I know Mike and your crew have worked very hard and we've all been appreciative, and I can't say it enough, you guys have done such a good job working to get that down. Everybody in this district has sacrificed, and it's good to see. Can you email this, Mike, about the attendance at East Lawn? The first day was 99.9%. Talked to another elementary principal who said theirs was 99.9% the first day, and all those parents to do, that's always tough that first week and have that kind of attendance just speaks to the parents in our district and how much we all care and try to make these things work. So it's great to see. At the Kiva Club, like everybody else, so often these days you hear about the news is negative and it's bad things. You don't hear enough about students who view the world as something bigger than themselves, and that's such a great thing to see at this age. It won't be good for us down the road having students leaving Midland with attitudes like that. And then last thing for me was at the building demo. I know that's supposed to be kicking up here late fall, so hopefully everybody in the public is, as we get into these things, are aware and know that it's coming, it's going to be, I'm sure, some mess and some rubble, and it's progress. I mean, it looked like it, but it will be progress, and looking forward to seeing lots of good things at East Lawn, or, I'm sorry, Central.
Well, I thought it was a refreshing meeting tonight. An excellent job all around for the financial statement and for the audit.
The Kiva Club, I thought, was great because I'm part of a number of organizations that function very similarly. You know, these kids are, who donated $25 or whatever amounts, they're impacting lives that they'll never know that they've impacted. And they're going to leave this program just better people, and hopefully will continue that role of giving and putting the service of others before themselves.
You know, having young kids that are just now entering MPS, it's nice to be exposed to the depth and diversity of programs and clubs that this system offers. Every meeting that I come here and sit here, you see a new presentation, which is a great, great change, and expose that to myself and to the public, who may not know that Kiva Club even exists. So I think that was a really good presentation tonight. Just to congratulate the Shining Stars, Jason and Billy, and our distinguished service recipients, Dave and Cindy, who are here with us tonight. Just overall, a great meeting and nice to be back, so.
Thank you. All right, yes, happy fall. Does it start tomorrow? All right, first of all, and I'll read a prepared statement because we do have our exchange program going on right now with China. So beginning September 20 through October 2, Midland Public Schools, in partnership with Saginaw Valley State University, is hosting eight educators from Chongqing, China. Five high school teachers and three elementary teachers will be visiting classrooms, talking with teachers and administrators, and taking in local cultural sites. Other members of the Chongqing delegation are visiting Bay City Public Schools, Bay Ironnet Career Center, and Frankhamuth Public Schools. And this exchange is made possible through a grant from the Gerstacker Foundation. So we welcome them. This is actually where I work. We actually have a joint venture going on in this city. It's an industrial city with a lot of ties to automotive, which makes it a perfect fit here with the state of Michigan. So we welcome them, and then I don't think we've mentioned, we also have some of our teachers, do we have administrators and students, too, going over there the end of October?
It's all teachers, I believe.
Okay.
Yep. So next month, they'll be heading over there.
Yeah, that will be a very exciting trip for them. I think it's a city of 18 million people, so.
Thirty-four, I think they told us.
Oh, thirty-four when you get outside the, okay.
Yeah.
So, yes, definitely. Other things, I want to congratulate two Shining Stars, distinguished service award winners. I also very much appreciate our audit every year. It's always good to go through that, and feels good when they give us the unmodified audit and tell us all the good things that we're doing. I very much appreciated the Kiva presentation. I've known some of those children since they were little, and it's so fabulous to see when they grow up and the great things they do, and I have a feeling those kids will go on and do very great things, not only for themselves personally, but to impact society. So that was great. And like you said, it's wonderful seeing all the different opportunities we offer in Midland Public Schools, and I know for my own children, that's one of the hardest things is there's so much, and everything sounds so good, and you have to make sure that you limit yourself because there's so much opportunity that we offer here, and it's the support from teachers that, you know, if it wasn't for Mr. Mulvaney to step up and lead a group like that, they wouldn't have had the Kiva Club. So I appreciate everyone that steps forward to help lead these clubs. Off to a good beginning of the school year. We've already gone and done our walkthrough at Dow High, and it looks like everything's off to a good start. So I will turn it back over to you.
Yeah, I think you're all aware that we, a couple of weeks ago, issued our request to our foundations for our STEM strategic plan, and after working with them, they were very specific on what we should send a request in for, and at this point in time, we've even heard back from the Gerstacker Foundation, I guess unofficially, we haven't got anything written at this point, but that Mr. Outt informed us that their foundation acted and granted us $850,000 for our STEM strategic plan that will be implemented through our school district, and so we're anxiously waiting for the other foundations, which we'll hear down the road. Probably, many of them won't actually meet until December, so somewhere down the road we should know the status of those. We, under the STEM strategic plan, we've also met at this point in time with representatives from Saginaw Valley State University and Michigan State University on partnering with us in our STEM strategic plan, and particularly the STEM Elementary School that'll be at the central site, where we will have cooperation going back and forth. Given an example, Saginaw Valley is now going to go get themselves trained in Project Lead the Way, one of the pieces of the curriculum that we're going to implement, and they're going to be able to train our employees, which will drive our costs way down. And so that cooperation between the universities and ourselves will grow, all the way down to, we expect that their pre-intern teachers may do some time in our buildings, which will provide us those extra hands, those extra employees when we're doing open space, maker space, STEM projects that you're going to need, plus those teachers' experience of getting into those classrooms as well. So a lot's going on behind the scene with the STEM school and the STEM strategic plan for the entire district. As Patrick mentioned, the demolition projects are moving forward. We met with the city engineers, the Semco Energy and those type of utilities, because they all have to be involved in the shut-off removal of some of those utilities at those sites. And you think demolition of a building is an easy process, it isn't, and it's actually quite costly when you think of asbestos abatement and all of the requirements you have to meet, right down to parking lots and underground utilities, and what you leave under those sites from sewage and drainage, and where do you cap that off and where do you take that back that won't pose problems to us in the future or anyone who may, some of the pieces we may look to sell at some point in time. So there's a lot to those projects, and they've been being planned, and they will begin. You'll see proposals being put out for the demolition within the next few weeks, and most of the projects will begin in November, begin in December, really kicking off once we move out of the auditorium and central completely, which is the end of the holiday season after they do their events. So begin to prepare yourself for those because there'll be some sad moments, I'm sure, too, when people are seeing some of those buildings come down, but it is well needed, and will definitely suit us right in the future as we go forward. We've talked quite a bit about enrollment, and I don't think we've ever watched enrollment so closely and anxiously, because as you saw in our audit, with a few breaks on that enrollment, will definitely put our budget balanced or maybe even to the good. And early in the summer, as we were watching enrollment, it seemed almost too good to be true, and as you know, you really can't tell until you see the whites of everyone's eyes in the building. We've kind of did a whites of everyone's eyes count at this point, and we're still feeling very, very good about enrollment. But of course, student count is October 7th, am I going to say that right? I think it's October 7th. And we will wait till then to give you official count to make sure we have that right. Our enrollment is very complicated to figure out because we do service our parochial schools, and we get a portion of FTEs there as well. And then we have the ESA programs, which are hosted in our buildings, and the ESA claims their FTE, but then we get to claim a portion of that when they go into our classrooms. And so when we get done, we'll pick up a lot of enrollment through those numbers as well. But I can tell you that we're trending extremely well and most likely will beat our budgeted number that we estimated last year significantly, and so we'll see where that goes as we get closer to October. Next Monday, a team of teachers and administrators and our architect and our construction manager and one of the Saginaw Valley representatives will be visiting a STEM school in Champaign, Illinois. This school is one of two that we've been able to locate in the country that was designed from the ground up, elementary. There are some high school buildings that have as well. And the unique one about the one in Champaign is that it also partners with the University of Illinois, and those partnerships we had talked about with the university, hence the Saginaw Valley person attending with us as well. So we're very anxious to go visit the schools, not only see the structure, but to see how they use that facility every day. My understanding is it's quite a unique structure. There's like 32 STEM concepts just built into the design of the building. For example, the window pattern is a math code, and I always forget the name of the math code, Mr. Cooper?
Fibonacci.
The Fibonacci code. So the pattern of the windows, you know, and so just those incidental things put into the building as well. We're very excited about that visit, and that was graciously funded by the Dow Chemical Company for us to go visit that school. We did host the Chongqing delegation today. Very excited about being in that program. They, I had a very small part, I thought, today where I got up and spoke to them about our school system, but as it went on, they didn't want to let me off the floor because they had some incredible questions. You can see they're very into what they're doing and very interested in the American system, and, you know, I think they're trying to become more like us, and there's days that I think our legislators would have us become more like them, and we really have to be careful of that because as the, most of the Chinese know why they're visiting the US schools so much is they struggle beyond the rote memorization and those type of skills, and they're looking for, how does Americans teach in this environment where they're not just doing drill and practice, and that they're having these concepts where we get to critical thinking components of that out there. So they are visiting our classrooms and visiting our teachers. I think they visit, went to Midland High today after we were done with them, and they'll be visiting throughout the week. Teams of educators in Midland have signed up to chapero their own them around the community and back to their hotels at night, and so we have a passenger van that's carrying them around for the next two weeks, and then on the weekends, they get to go see some nice parts of Michigan. I think they're going to Petoskey and Traverse City and Mackinac Island one weekend, and then our teachers will visit them. So lots to learn back and forth on that, and I think that's very promising. Next year, most likely, we're going to try to be so involved in this program and in this partnership with Saginaw Valley, where we'll host some of their students potentially as well. So that'd be a lot of fun to do. As I wrote you last week and told you that we were surprised to hear, but understand why Susan Johnson will be leaving Seabird Elementary and a great opportunity for her husband, and she, her and her husband will be quickly moving to Washington State, and so we will be without a principal soon. And so we are working on what that means for us and what's the best scenario, short-range and long-range at Seabird Elementary. And for those parents who may view this or watch this board meeting today, we'll have something very soon that we'll announce, and we'll have that planned out to make sure Seabird's in good shape going forward, as Scott's one of those parents, so. I've got two there, we need to get on it. We did have a meeting also with some representatives from Dow Chemical on their retail side about their products being used in our STEM school and our additions and construction going on when we get to those in the other buildings. And not only do we want to use Dow products because it's our community and it's part of who we are, but there was the potential to see if we could partner some capacity on cost savings. And so you think of that, and you think... their products being used in our STEM school and our additions and construction going on when we get to those in the other buildings. And not only do we want to use Dow products because it's our community and it's part of who we are, but there was the potential to see if we could partner some capacity on cost savings. And so you think of that, and you think, well, you know, as you know, Dow doesn't produce many of the exact products, but their products are used in so many products, and how does that work? And we, it was a thought we had, and when we met with them, they said, yes, we actually do that quite often. And it's really where they work on their supply costs to vendors who then will bid on our projects. So it's yet to be seen, but we hope that partnership will grow, and we could, will get some bid savings potentially when vendors bidding for insulation or roofing products that has Dow somehow in there. Dow Corning, they, the Dow representative says he knows context at Dow Corning because in some ways, there's more Dow Corning products that will be in these buildings than Dow products. And so we hope to make the same connection out Dow Corning yet come up, so that'll be very interesting. And of course, this is not official, and Roger can't write about it yet, but he will be able to write about it soon, that on September 29, the US Secretary of Education, Artie Dunking, will be announcing the blue ribbons, National Blue Ribbon Schools for this school year, and we expect Chestnut Hill will be named on September 29. But they've been asked us to not say anything until September 29, so be aware.
Even though this is on TV.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not really, I've never been very good about, hey, we're going to tell you all this, but don't tell the public yet. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else to add tonight?
Go Chestnut Hill.
That's right, all you Chestnut Hill people on the board. All right, thank you. Meeting ends at 8:11.